All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. We'll have a roll call for attendance. Maria?
Mayor taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Wiesen.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Favazza.
Here.
And Ms. Prince.
You forgot me.
Sorry about that, Chairman Pope.
Here.
Thank you.
Everybody is accounted for. Now I'll ask you to join me in the salute to the flag. And there we go, just takes a second. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Next, oral communications. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to the school committee, this is their Or the public shall have the opportunity every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. Is there anybody who would like to speak? I see, Mary Ann, we'll start with you. I'm not in control here, so I can't, somebody's got to allow her to speak. Okay. Yeah, I think you're all set, Mary Ann. You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue, thank you. I'd like to know, I'd like the general public to know what you have found out thus far regarding Article 97 of Bill 2628, as there has been no information brought forth to the general public.
Okay. I can tell you, I inquired about that this afternoon, and it has passed, it came before the, it came out of committee with a recommendation to approve. It was voted on the 25th of June in the state senate, and it's now before the House. So that's where it's at.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Mary Ann?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Eric. And once again, somebody's going to have to allow him to speak. I don't, I don't have the control of this. There we go. Erica, unmute yourself and go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman Pope and all the distinguished members of the Gloucester School Committee. On the 24th of June, I presented a resolution before the school committee in support of education funding and the COVID-19 error. At that time, it was under my impression that this might be taken up on this particular meeting or a subsequent meeting, or there'd be some action on it. I did not see it on the agenda. So let me introduce myself. My name is Eric Lee. I'm a biology teacher at Gloucester High School, an advocate for fair public funding of all public schools, and appreciate definitely the efforts of this school committee and of the city and the mayor as well to get state funding. But I do realize that in this national crisis that we have here, my resolution was asking for the, the school committee asked Congress that they approve new deal level funding for us from state and local governments, and that our state legislator and Charlie Baker should fund public education prepay through higher education at a level needed to maintain current standing, staffing and services, and fully fund the first year of the Student Opportunity Act and enable students in the state economy to thrive. We can't afford to go backwards in this time, and I realize the state budget needs to be balanced, and we are in a crisis with this, and I understand the constraints on the city as well as best as I can not being in that position. But this is a time where we need to reach out to the federal government through, I see that CARES money is going to be accepted, and that's wonderful to know that, but the Heroes Act is in front of the senate, and it's something that we need. And I really do feel that school committees, as well as teachers, citizens, everyone needs to advocate for the commitment to fully fund our public schools from the federal and the state government, and that we have that. I do appreciate the mandate that you guys had, it was part of mine that you had asked for no unfunded mandates to come from the state, and that had been voted on in the last one, but I do hope that you, as well as other school committees that have already voted for this resolution, would transmit a letter expressing their support to the state legislators and Speaker of the House, and of course, senate president, governor, and any members of Congress asking them to represent this district. It, I think it would go a long way in letting the local media know that we're all advocating for this funding to come from the federal government, and that it will help the taxpaying citizens of Gloucester. So I don't know if you're planning on voting on that resolution tonight, but I would appreciate an update. Thank you.
We did vote at our last meeting on the, the proposal, the resolution that was put before, put forward by MAS C., which was very similar to, or overlapped what you had submitted to us, Eric. And we have sent that off, that did not go, that only went to state entities, and I think you're, you're correct that we should send something to the federal government as well, and we'll take that up at our first convenience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak under oral communications? Seeing none.
And there is, there is one person.
Oh, Evan Raben, Raben?
Hello, everyone. This is Evan Raben. I'm actually the CEO and owner of Premier Chess. We actually do school programs in 80 schools around the country. Right now, we're also doing a virtual camp for kids that are at home. You can look this up at premierchess.com. And one thing we're actually doing with a lot of school districts and schools in particular, since a lot of the galas and other fundraisers got canceled, is we're actually donating one hour of virtual group classes as virtual fundraisers. So if anyone is interested in learning a little bit more about how we could, you know, talk about programming camp, or how we could actually help schools fundraise, please do send me an email at evan@premierchess.com, or you could call 917-776-1306. Thank you so much.
Evan, can you send that information to our recording secretary, Maria Puglisi? Her email is on our website.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Now I don't see anyone. So we will move on to recognitions, and I would, I would like to start by recognizing the Gloucester Teachers Association for the, the marvelous job they did in setting up yard, yard signs, that's what we call them when we're running, but I guess this, welcoming Ben Lummis to Gloucester, as well as the big ad they put in the paper. And have they brought you cookies yet, Ben? So they, they are going out of their way and doing a very good job of welcoming our new superintendent, so I think they should be recognized for that.
Absolutely, Jonathan. Cynthia Carney and Amy Clayton stopped by my first day here, first couple hours that I was here on Monday, and brought a great, beautiful flowering plant, a copy of the Gloucestropolis game, which I'm hopefully, hopefully I will beat my daughter at, but probably not, and then also this great fisherman's hat, baseball hat from the high school. So they are, it's a great welcome, not only by the GTA and Cynthia Carney and her folks, but just by everybody so far. I'll talk more about that during my superintendent's report, but folks have been just been wonderful, and I really appreciate the outreach, especially from the GTA.
Are there any other recognitions? I don't, I don't see any. Then we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for further discussion? And I think we, I would like to remove item E, the acceptance of the grant, which is the DESI Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Care Act, and maybe Greg could, he probably was going to talk about this anyways, but before we vote on it, it might be nice to hear what the great amount of work that has gone into compiling all of the costs, the additional costs that we are facing. Is there anything else that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda without item E, with item E removed?
So moved.
Okay. Maria, roll call vote.
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Now, in your packet, you can see the application for the, the relief. And I'm sure we're going to accept this, but Greg, could you just speak to this briefly?
I'd be happy to, thank you. The Esser grant, our total for Gloucester, based on our Title I allocation from FY20, is $471,014, a portion of which is also allocated to private schools within our district, but it is a smaller portion. They, the grant covers a number of things, and it's actually quite a, it's quite a broad based grant. We could put in many things that were related to our response to our current situation, and in this particular grant, we have a number of things, including...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can barely hear you, Greg. You're going to have to speak louder. I don't know anyone else can, and I haven't promised, but I know you're a soft spoken person, but I really need you to speak a little louder.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sweetie.
I'm really close to the microphone. Is that, is that okay? No? Is everybody else okay with it? Okay.
I can hear you fine. You can turn up your speakers on the, on your computer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to talk a little bit louder. So the categories, basic categories are stipends for many of the teams who will be working throughout the summer and the fall for the remote learning advisory committees and the school reopening work groups. We have four main remote learning committees and one district reopening work group, and we also have school-based work groups, and these, these teams are tasked with taking the best, best practices we learned from March through June around remote learning, and including sharpening our communications, getting better feedback from families, students and staff, creating professional development plans. The reopening work groups will be focusing on all of the aspects of the logistics of opening school in the fall. So these groups are funded primarily by the Esser grant. We also have funds in the grant for summer tutoring program for our English learners. We also have a substantial amount of money to focus on the kind of tutoring and small group work that we anticipate needing to do in the fall for students who demonstrate gaps in their learning from the spring. And so there's, there's a good deal of money in what would typically be Title I or EL tutoring. We have funding for that, as well as general funding for any student who teachers identify could use a little extra, a little extra help in the fall to catch up for anything that they may have missed. So we have quite a lot of money set aside for that for the fall. We have funds in the grant for parent training to make available for students, basic computer skills that are focused on assisting students with remote learning. We have additional funds for interpreting and translation services and professional development on workplace health and safety, as well as remote learning. There's a substantial, substantial amount of money for equipment, including Chromebooks, larger format Chromebooks, at least 14 inch size for our teachers if, if they're needed to support some of the various configurations we may have in the, in and out of school in the, in the fall. Document cameras to assist with remote instruction. We also have a group that is going to be piloting a learning management system for our early grades. One of the frontrunners is a learning management system called Seesaw that we'll be piloting and perhaps implementing, and some funding for PPEs as well. So that's, it's quite a, quite a wide variety of services, tutoring and equipment to support our remote learning.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, I have questions. So this is a grant, is it a matching grant? Was this going for, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear him. I'm, I have, I'm working on an iPad, and I'm not listening, and I can't hear everything. I shut off with Senator Maki, told him I couldn't because this was important, but obviously you guys have a better ears than I do because I have vertigo right now. So it's a grant, and I couldn't understand it all. I saw something in the package, but you know, today, I actually took a mini vacation, but that didn't work. So is this a matching grant for anything? Do we have to come up with anything?
Mayor, it is not a matching grant. We do not have to provide any matching funds.
Great, and who's this grant coming from again? I'm sorry.
This is coming from the department, this is a DESI grant.
Oh, a DESI grant, fantastic. I heard some of it, and that was great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the Esser grant?
So moved.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the introduction of our new superintendent, Ben Lummis, who started on Monday and has already achieved so much, he's just going to tell us all about it, I believe, and will, I know he's been meeting with different people, but maybe Ben, welcome aboard, and we're very happy to have you here, and maybe you can just tell us a little bit about what you're doing and what your entry plan is. You're muted.
So you can hear me now, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. So thank you, Chairman Pope, thank you, members. It's truly been a very, very warm welcome. I do have a short report to give you, which I'll just read here quickly, but then get it to you in writing once Mr. Lisi has a, has a chance to look over it and make sure that all my i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but my first three days have been really great. I've received warm and enthusiastic welcomes from everyone with whom I've met so far, including district office staff and leaders, principals, school committee members, as I mentioned earlier, GTA President Cynthia Carney and veterans teacher Amy Clayton, who are kind enough to stop by my first day. People have been saying to me, you know, I'm asking a bunch of questions as I learn, as I meet folks, as I try to learn about the community, learn about the schools, and one of the things folks have said again and again that they love about Gloucester, and they're really proud of, is how kind and friendly, friendly the people are, and I just couldn't agree more. Folks have been great to me, and I just really appreciate it. So this week and next, I'm meeting individually with each principal, the district office leaders, each school committee member, public health director Karen Carroll. On Monday, on my first day, Principal Amy Pasquillo was kind enough to give me a tour of each Gloucester school on my first day of work, which was interesting and educational, but not in all seriousness, it was great to see that school and just the shape it's been, and really start off seeing that first. I'm also setting up a meeting with Fire Chief Smith, Smith and Police Chief Conley, and will be reaching out to other city department heads in the coming days, set up appointments with them. These meetings are super helpful to me, they're essential as I get going here. They're giving me a chance to get to know folks, help them begin to get to know me, hear people's perspectives on what they are proud of in Gloucester and in our schools, the work they've been doing in their lives, where they're from, and also their expectations of me. So it's been really, really helpful on many levels, personal, professional, to get to know individuals, but really also to just begin to get a sense of the community and our schools. I really, really appreciate the support and guidance of Assistant Superintendent Greg Bach. He's been doing a tremendous job of getting me up to speed while not overwhelming me, and I appreciate that a ton. He's just been a tremendous help, and then I could not be getting where I need to be and, and meeting with the people I need to meet with without Stephanie Delisi's help and support. She's just been great as well, and just anyway, it's really the, the case across the board. People have been fantastic so far. Just moving on to some, some of the work that we're already getting going, or I'm already getting going with folks, reopening of schools. So my three primary areas of focus, which I've talked to you folks about, you know, during the hiring process, you know, for now are going to be getting the schools open, the Veterans East Gloucester Building Project, and then really getting to know our schools, our staff and the community. So those, already making strides on those areas. As I mentioned, going to East Gloucester School on my first day. Our planning for reopening schools is fully underway, with additional parts of the planning work getting going this week. I'll give you a quick summary of the, of the whole approach, and then ask Greg to, he's dove into it already a little bit through the Esser grant, but might want to highlight a couple of things as well. So we're basing our planning work on, on the work that was done in the spring across the schools and across the district, on the guide, initial draft guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that came out on June 25th, and then also input from staff, families and students. We'll also be working, as I mentioned, with DPW and Department of Public Health here locally. They and other departments are going to be, you know, crucial partners in making decisions, creating guidance, creating frameworks, and then, you know, getting things going. So really reach out across the board to folks. The teams that we're working on, which I'll explain in a moment, are all collaborative groups. They include educators, staff, school district leaders, and we're working on three levels. First, there is a district-wide school reopening team, and I'll describe all these in a moment. District-wide school reopening team, it's getting going this week. Then the school-based reopening teams, and then there's the remote learning working groups, and those really Greg was talking about a fair bit, and we'll talk a little bit more about. So again, I'll go through each one of those. This district-wide school reopening team is launching on Friday with its first meeting. This is a cross-district group with folks from all schools and many roles, including teachers, nurses, principals, district leaders, special education teachers, paraprofessionals, OT and PT staff, and also GTA leadership. This is a group of about 20 folks. We had actually about 50, 50 folks apply to participate, so really great, just interest and commitment to working on this team and getting these areas sort of planned out. We have a group of about 20. The group's going to address areas of health and safety, personnel and staffing, facilities and operations, training on health and safety protocols, program modifications as needed, and also communications and messaging. This group's going to be really working with a district-wide lens. How do we create district-wide protocols and procedures that will be a framework, our guide to all schools? We'll be working and making sure the school committee is aware of these things as we're, as we're developing them, we'll be getting input, you know, from you as well as we go along, but just thinking about, you know, what are the areas that we need, you know, guardrails or frameworks, protocols, procedures that apply across the board. And then that will feed to the school-based reopening team. So each school will have a reopening team that takes that district-wide guidance and district-wide plans and operationalizes them for each school. So for instance, you know, we'll have a framework for how drop-off and pickup, pickup should work each day, and consistent guidelines that schools will follow, but the reality of it is that each school have to, you know, modify those slightly and operationalize them for their specific, you know, location or grade levels, that sort of stuff, because obviously, you know, pick up and drop off at the preschool is going to be very different than you have at O'Malley. So, but that's the idea, is that we work on a district-wide level, and then the school-based reopening teams take that work and, and adjust it and operationalize it for their specific, you know, you know, place in school. So those are the first two, and then the last one is the remote learning working groups, and those have been in place and operating since May. Mr. Bach described them quite a bit. Their primary focus is on teaching and learning, understanding what we did well in the spring, where we can improve going forward, and then putting together the resources, materials, and professional development to support our staff over the summer and into the school year. So let me pause there and just see if Mr. Bach wants to add anything, any more detail about their remote learning groups. Again, they're organized at the preschool level, at the K-5 level, O'Malley has a group, and also GHS, but if you want to add anything to that, Greg, that'd be really helpful.
I think I'd like, thank you, I'd like to add two things to that. One is that there are three primary, for most of the groups, there are three primary objectives. Professional development certainly is one of them, but information gathering is another, the important component that we often don't get enough time to do, or don't push to the forefront that we really have with these committees, is developing a two-way communication plan with families. So I just, for example, today, received from the elementary group, they have developed their first parent newsletter. It's directly related to, it actually reports out survey results from the over 250 families who, who provided survey information in May. It shares to those families... It shares to those families, these are the kinds of things that you said, and gathers those together, and then speaks directly about how that information is shaping what we're going to be doing. And, you know, that's important feedback for somebody to get. If you spend the time to fill out a survey or share a comment, it's really nice to know that you were heard. And it's especially nice to know that not only were you heard, but the things that you said are perhaps validated by getting the feedback from what the consensus was, and also how it's going to play out and make a change in the fall. And I think that's an important component that each of the groups are considering in all of their work. The only other thing I'd like to point out is the resource catalog, which is intended for two purposes. One is to provide a single clearinghouse, a one-stop place with a informational matrix for all of the resources that are in use across the district. So it might be a certain, let's say, a literacy, a fluency program, online fluency program that we use. It would have a teacher side and also a parent side, which is what they'll be working on. So teachers will be able to look across the matrix and say, oh, this is perfect for the grade that I teach. I've never used it before, but there'll be a description of what it targets, its best uses, tutorials on how to use it. And then we are hoping to enlist in district, basically phone a friend, experts in the district who are really, really utilize that resource and who are willing to respond to an email, or take a call, or share something that they've done. And we'd like to then take the same thing and revise it for, to be a parent-facing matrix so that a parent can access the catalog and say, I really like to have something for, to help my child who is in third grade and is struggling with a particular math concept. And so they'd be able to see that and understand what the resource is about, how to access it, and where to go if they need further help. So that's a key piece that each of the groups are working on as well.
Any questions?
Mr. Lummis, I think you're still muted. Yeah?
Yeah, just to add a couple pieces to that. Thank you, Greg, first of all. Is, you know, just to build on what Greg was saying about communications and messaging. So this is super important to keep folks, meaning the community, and especially, you know, families, parents, yourselves, others, you know, in the loop as we go forward. And doing that by giving folks updates, giving folks, you know, pretty shortly, sort of just how we're approaching this. And then also making sure that we're translating those updates, translating those materials, and making sure, you know, the wide variety of families and parents can really access them. I think it's important also to consider, you know, as I think Greg mentioned, sort of this two-way, you know, we've been doing, Gloucester's been doing quite a bit of surveying of staff, of students as well, and also families, and how to, and reporting back on that, as Greg said. But then also, how do we get further information from families about what they're thinking as we develop plans in response to those, what they're thinking about health and safety and education? So we really do continue, need to continue to communicate both ways with families. That's one thing. And then the last piece I'll just finish with is, you know, despite Greg and my calm demeanor here, we and all of the leaders and staff are very well aware that this is urgent, urgent, and more urgent. You know, we have to move very quickly here to come up with answers, develop frameworks, get things operationalized. The remote learning groups are really, really, I think, in very good shape in terms of progress. But we have a lot of answers to work through, and problems to solve, and, or solutions to identify, I should say. And we've got to do it at real pace here.
Kathy, you had a question?
Yes, I had a question. Do I, maybe it's too early, but do we have any families involved yet in, you know, in kind of figuring out what that two-way communication would best look like for them? Or, you know, any of the other decision points that you would want family input from parents?
At this point, we don't, I don't have information on whether we have decision points on what, you know, how to enlist them and on what. Greg, I don't know if through the surveys, whether or not we were asking the question about, you know, what's the best way for you to get information? Have we been able to?
Those are the kinds of second-round informational pieces that teachers are working on right now. And I know that they've even been building right into the newsletters, links for responding, asking questions, making comments. So we do not have parents sitting at the table in these work groups yet, but we certainly have teachers who are designing all kinds of things to be able to gather information, but also engage in regular communication. And out of that, I expect will come a set of the kinds of needs that parents express along the way. So they are, they're thinking of all kinds of ways, not, that go far beyond surveys. They're talking about parent information nights, forums, all kinds of things. Trainings for parents before school even starts, after school starts. So there's a lot on the table.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions? Laura?
So again, this may be early, or I guess we're all in it. It's all early, and it's all urgent, as Ben said. How are we, as these groups are working, how much, how much DESI guidance has there been since the June, was it the 25th guidance that came out, if any? And, you know, sort of what, how much, how much are we able to do? I'm assuming quite a bit, but how much are we able to do with the guidance we have? How much guidance are we waiting for? Now there's a question of some federal guidance, just wondering, sort of the interface between what's coming from the state and the federal government and what we're doing.
Sure. So there hasn't been any guidance since the June 25th initial draft guidance. There's been one phone call with the commissioner. There's actually a phone call tomorrow morning with the commissioner and superintendents. Those have been sort of question to answer more than, you know, new news or new guidance. We do, so in terms of your first question, how much can we do based on this? I think we actually knew quite a bit. You know, you know, one thing is clear in the initial guidance is making three plans, you know, back to school with protocols, health and safety protocols, you know, hybrid, and then, you know, fully remote. Because that's really, those are the areas, that's how we're planning essentially, you know, those three areas. And then with what we have now, especially the, you know, the three feet distancing with specific health and safety protocols, that's super important in terms of just understanding what principals are doing. Or I've talked to a couple of principals so far who are, you know, looking at their classrooms and counting distances and understanding what they've got to move out, that sort of stuff. So there's sort of operational pieces there that we're certainly working on. So we can really move, you know, quite quickly on these things. The other pieces that they expect to provide guidance on in the coming weeks are things like process for handling a COVID-19 positive case in the school community. You know, that's even still without their guidance. It's something we can work with, with the Department of Public, our Department of Public Health. They're putting together additional remote learning resources. We're doing that locally. They will supplement that sort of thing. They will have further information on transportation and buses, and that's a crucial piece that we're really sort of, we're really waiting for. That's a piece, I don't think we can go very far without their guidance. And then also, they'll have further guidance in special education or English language education sort of thing. So we're doing that locally. We still need to move forward on it, but it'll likely be shaped in some directions by what they, what they come from, you know, what they come forward with. So it's, it's sort of a, you know, I think of it as a range, some things we can power ahead fully on, some things we have to, we can get going, and then assume adjustments, and some things we sort of have to wait on, I think.
Melissa, you had a question?
Thank you. Superintendent Lummis, you may not know the answer to this question, but do you have any kind of timeframe of when the information's going to come out? In other words, the school committee might meet again in July, and then in August, we have two meetings. Do you think by the beginning of August that we'll have some idea whether we're going back to school, all in school, maybe half the class one day or another day, or one week or another week? You know, I mean, parents are still eager for information, but at the same time, I know we don't have enough information to make decisions. But do you have any sort of timeline frame that we will know how the kids are going back to school in September? It's only six weeks away.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we have to really know and have sort of a go/no-go type of decision by the 7th of August, I'd say. I'd sort of throw that out there very honestly. But I think that's where we are. You know, the hardest part on this, I think, I mean, there's so many hard parts on this, okay? But one of them is, you know, we've just gone into phase three in the state, you know, and we're doing it in a much more moderated fashion than other states, okay? But what does phase three mean, and what does that mean for indicators, you know, in terms of health and COVID? And, you know, that's about the time, that first week, two weeks of August, where I think we're going to have, we all of us, a better understanding of what the impact of going to phase three means, you know? So even though I say that I think our target date is somewhere in that first week of August for the community to know, there also will have to be some flexibility at that point. I mean, I hate to say that, but I, we, there is a chance here that things shift in August, okay? So we have to be prepared on both things. But I really do, I would set that first week of our August as the sort of real determination of, is it hybrid, is it full remote? You know, or is it, you know, in person, that sort of thing? I think that's a place where we really have to, you know, work towards a date.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So we'll move on. And the next order of business is subcommittee reports. Were there any subcommittee meetings since the last meeting? No, I don't, I didn't think so. All right. So we'll move on to action. Our Ward Four Counselor Val Gilman is here. And hi, Val. And we have a, we have a request from the city to, asking us to allow the city to use a Plum Cove School as a polling place for the primary on September 1st and for the November 3rd election. We're not open either of those days. I don't see any problem, but Val, you want to just cue this up?
Great. Thank you, Jonathan, and welcome to our new superintendent. I'm so excited to be here on your first meeting. So I, Joanne Sinos, our city clerk, drafted a letter, and I offered to present it tonight to the, to the school committee. Dear school committee, as the city's election official, I'm requesting your permission to use the Plum Cove School as a polling location for Ward 4-2 for the upcoming elections on September 1st, 2020, and November 3rd, 2020. The reason for this request is due to the inability to practice social distancing in the current Ward 4-2 polling location at the Lanesville Community Center, or combine Ward 4-2 with the Ward 4 Beeman School polling location. And discussion, discussing the options with me. The Plum Cove School would be the best option for the 2,496 voters in Ward 4-2. Upon the school committee's approval, Council Gilman will file a council order for the city council to vote to change the polling location per the Mass General law. Notification of the change of the polling location must be sent to every registered voter and to the Secretary of State's office before the elections. Very truly yours, Joanne Sinos. So in essence, the Lanesville Community Center is just tiny, and there's no way that we could figure out how to get all, and it's a, it's a very popular ward for voting. And we did not feel that there was any way that we could safely have voting at this location. And we immediately thought that Plum Cove is where we used to have our polling. And just for these two times during COVID, we were hoping that the school committee would approve this because we want our people to be safe. And we believe that the queuing of folks going through the front lobby and then into the gym, and then possibly out the other door would be a straight line and not, not get into any type of congregations and people that might be within their six feet. So we're hoping that you will approve it. And my understanding through the city clerk's office is that there will be funding from the care grant for cleaning, and that will be the city's responsibility for the cleaning of the, of this venue and making sure that it's sanitized. So I'm hoping that you support this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Any questions? Seems fairly straightforward. And as you said, we, in years past, that was the polling place. It was, I can't remember when they switched to the Lanesville Community Center, but for many years, it was Plum Cove for 4-2. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the use of Plum Cove School for polling for the Massachusetts primary on September 1st, 2020, and November 3rd, 2020.
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Let me see if the volume's.
Know what I'm hearing here.
Gary's muted. Gary's not muted.
Oh, okay. Is there any further discussion? In that case, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
May I take it?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yeah. Thank you, Val.
Okay, thanks. And it carries unanimously, and thank you for coming to our meeting, Val.
Thank you so much. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, Val.
There's no other action items. Next order of business is an update on the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Project. The, we ran around quite a bit the last couple of days trying to get all the signatures in place and such, but the schematic design was submitted to MSBA today. And the schedule is, I believe, let's see, I can tell you, the schedule coming up is that it on, there'll be a scope and a project scope and budget conference, a virtual conference with MSBA on August 19th, and then there'll be the MSBA board meeting. And they'll vote to, hopefully vote to approve the project scope and budget. That'll, both of those will be virtual meetings. And I will, once we have that information, we'll pass it on to people so they can watch. Are there any questions on that? Laura?
So Jonathan, you said the project scope and budget conference is on August 19th. Is there a board meeting to approve also on the 19th, on August 19th?
No, no, it's August 26th, the board meeting. Generally speaking, they, what, they will review the schematic design. And then they'll come back to the designers and the OPM, and possibly to the building committee with any questions that they have or clarifications in writing. And that process will go forward. Then there'll be, well, it used to be a sit-down, but now it's going to be virtual, where they actually review the proposal. Sort of the professionals at MSBA will sit down with the professionals here in Gloucester, and they'll, they'll have a discussion. And they'll get answers to any questions that they have, that they aren't answered by, in writing. And then they'll make a recommendation. The professionals will make a recommendation to the board. The board is very large. I think there's, there's probably 10 or 12, maybe even more, members of the board. And they're, they come from all different areas of the building industry as well as education. But the chair of the board is the state treasurer. But the chair of the board is the state treasurer, and they'll convene a meeting, but they almost always follow the recommendation of the, essentially the subcommittee, that, the professionals that work for them. So, and that will be August 26th. If that's approved, we'll then be able to move forward with wording for a, a, a ballot question on the November 3rd ballot. That will have to be approved by the city council as well as by MSBA. And that goes on to the ballot. And essentially, if that passes, the MSBA sends us a contract that says very precisely, actually, it'll be very precise how much they're going to reimburse after the, if they approve it in, on, in August. The budget will be set at that point. We, because we have a contract manager at risk, we're very confident in the numbers that we have to move forward and that the building can be, and we feel we have enough contingencies to deal with any unknowns, which there always are some. And, but the number, MSBA, the number for MSBA cannot go up after that point. It's, it's set in stone at that point, and that will be the number that will be on the ballot in November 3rd. So Samantha?
I'm sorry if you said this, but who discusses what that question will look like?
Well, you have to draft something and present it to the council and to MSBA, and they both have to, so the, the city council is the one that is the, is the, will discuss it, and the MSBA really had, just has to approve it. You know, they want to make sure that it covers what, what their concerns are, which is that we're going to have enough money to.
So the city council is the one who drafts the question, or is it?
No, no. The, the building committee will, and the administration will draft the question and submit it to, but it, the, the, the city council will have the ability to change it, you know, if they want, they can amend it or correct it or whatever. So we'll, we'll, it'll start with, with the building committee, and then it'll go to the city council.
So the school committee as a whole doesn't have a say in, in the question development?
No.
Okay.
Not really. I mean, you can make your, you're certainly welcome to make any suggestions, we're, everybody is open to that, but it won't be a vote of the school committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Laura?
Is the schematic design that was submitted today, is that a public, is that a public document?
Yes.
So, and so I'm just wondering, I was on the website today, so, and none of this information is there. Would it be possible to sort of put up this calendar and also put up what's been submitted on the, on the project website? Because it hasn't, it doesn't look like it's been updated since May.
No. It, the minutes are, for the last number of meetings are included in the, our packet tonight for your information, and they can be posted. I have the calendar right here, I can, I can send that to you and to Grant or Stephanie or whoever needs to put it up.
Well, I don't know who does the website for the East Gloucester project.
And, but the schematic design was just pulled, I mean, we was, at four o'clock today, we were trying to verify enrollment numbers as well as trying to update the status of the Article 97, which all had to be included in that. So I don't, not sure, it may be the end of the week that we can actually have a, a, a comprehensive package that could be posted.
Even a calendar, I think, would be helpful, just with some of these dates would be just a useful for public information, so we know where we're going from.
I have that right in front of me, and I can send that to you right now. Okay. Any other questions? We probably ought to talk about our next meeting. Normally, we don't meet in July, we've already, but normal is not a word we use very often these days. So the question is, would we want to have another meeting in July? Would we want to have a meeting two weeks from tonight? When we get to August, there'll be two meetings, there'll be, our regular meetings will be the 12th and the 26th, I believe. Melissa?
Thank you. Normally, I would enjoy my time off, but knowing that I don't have to leave home now to go to a meeting is helpful. But this community is just starving for information regarding the opening of schools, and even though we may not have any decisions at our next meeting, I think it's helpful to talk about where we're at and any concerns that may come up, because people are tuning in or reaching out to us individually. I don't know if you're getting called, but I know I am eager to know. So I think keeping the lines of communication as open as possible is the best way to proceed over the next couple of months, next couple of years.
Yeah. Anyone else want to weigh in on Kathy?
I, I agree, plus I believe that our building and finance subcommittee meeting, we're going to talk about if there is anything such as a Plan B, if this vote doesn't fail, we're going to talk about the facility. So, you know, maybe that's an information gathering exercise, but I think we will have a discussion around that, and I think that's relevant to, to what people are interested in as well.
Okay. Well, that all makes sense to me. So we will schedule a meeting for two weeks from tonight, which would be the 22nd?
Yeah, 22nd.
All right. Anything else? Do we have Joel?
I really like the, the request I sent and the email regarding duty number seven to be included in our upcoming agenda, so we can figure out whether that, you know, requirement as interpreted recently is, you know, consistent with other values we have as a committee and with, you know, basic rights of free speech.
Well, just keep in mind, Joel, that the, our policies are not laws. They are a thing that we agree to do as a group. And we had a meeting on January 15th. All of that was reviewed, and I know for a fact that I highlighted that particular line in our policy, was it BBAA, number seven, as well as many other things I highlighted for discussion. And out of that meeting, there was no concerns of our motions to review or change anything. If you want to reopen, relook at a policy, we can do that. But Melissa, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I believe the policy that we're talking about is BBAA, and if you look at our policy manual and you look at the bottom, it says adopted 3, 2010, and the source was Gloucester. Back in 2010 is when we did a total revamp, I think Val Gilman was on the committee at the time, and Val and I sat down with M A S C and went through every single word of every single policy that we have. And if you look at the source, it does say Gloucester. However, if you look at other communities, because I went online and looked, if you go to the M A S C website, they have a lot of online manuals, policy manuals. Every single policy of BBAA that I pulled up in other school districts is the exact same language, and it's M A S C language. So I believe the source down the bottom should say M A S C, not Gloucester, and that happens on a lot of policies that we have. We just didn't switch it out correctly when we adopted the new policy handbook as a whole. And also, if you look at the regulations too, it says Robert's rules governs our meetings too. So I think that language is in almost every school committee's policy manual and Robert's rules language kind of talks about adopting the fact that we vote as a group and stand as a group. So if there's going to be any challenge to this policy, I think it's a bigger talk than us just changing the policy. I don't know that this is a freedom of speech or First Amendment, which I studied heavily in law school, and I'm sure Joel did too. I think this is part of a bigger conversation. If he's going to challenge it, I mean, you're challenging M A S C, you're challenging the legal department of M A S C. So I don't know if this committee really wants to take that on, but just know that this isn't just a simple conversation in my mind of just switching out a couple words if we don't like what our policies say.
I would just want to add, we'd probably need more than one person wanting to change the language in that policy and in support of that, given that we just reviewed it less than six months ago.
Just to clarify, I'm not necessarily saying there's an issue with the language, there's an issue with the way in which we apparently are applying and/or interpreting that language. I'm not saying the language isn't properly sourced, or that there isn't a viable application of that language. However, if, if a violation's occurred the way I was told it has occurred, then I think that we are applying that language incorrectly and in, in contrast to some of the other values that we as a school committee should be espousing.
All right. I'm not sure I completely understand that. Policies are, once again, they're not laws, they are things that we agree to as a group, just like when you become a lawyer, there are things that you agree to do to hold your, your license, you know, and basically violation of those things, you don't go to jail, well, hopefully, but, you know, you just get thrown out of the club. We don't have the capacity to do that. Violation of our policy is, we have no ability to remove anybody from, from the school committee and/or to penalize them in any way. The only thing that can be done is we can vote to censure them. And essentially, if it censure is simply says that we disapprove of what was done, there is no actual penalty involved in it. There's no, there's no repercussion. So, you know, we can, we can talk about how it's applied, if that's, that would clarify things, but I don't have any, any doubts in my mind, so. So that's, I can put that on, we can put that on the agenda for discussion. Okay. Melissa?
Can you just be clear of exactly what we are discussing?
Well, from what the request from Joel is, we are going to discuss how article, policy, BBAA, I guess they're Articles Seven, is applied. I mean, I.
I think if you read it, it's not that difficult. But I just want to know what we're coming to talk about, I guess.
That's what I just, that's what I just said, is I don't see any, any, any real wiggle room in that. It's really straightforward, but I don't see that there's any harm in talking about our policies and how they're applied. Anything else? Do we have? Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
May we take it?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Maria and Greg and Ben and Brendan.
Ben's partying, yay!
And I hope they'll get more exciting as we go along. This, this was a little dull. We'll, we'll, we'll.
It's okay. Exciting, you don't have to have exciting.
We'll pick it up a little.
Oh, please, Ben, don't let them kid you. This is the shortest meeting I've ever had in five years with them. Run while you can.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night.